Good evening, everyone. Public. We will call the order the public or the budget work session.
So, welcome, everybody, to our budget work session. We've got the general fund finish going through this evening. I am very hopeful that we'll be out of here by eight o'clock. We'll see how things go. But to start, we mean off, we have Amy and Courtney with the Virginia Main Street.
That's just because you didn't want to say the last name.
It is because I didn't want to say your last name. I'm so sorry. But we are going to let them talk just a little bit about the Virginia Main Street and how that helps their town. So if you ladies would want to take it, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Just give me one second to share my screen.
It's Boozing Lys.
I won't be offended if you get it wrong. We need permission to share.
Okay.
You should be able to share now. Can you try on heels?
I see it. You all see that?
Mm-hmm.
Beautiful. There we go. All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with me today. My name is Amy Kuzalakis, and I serve as the Virginia Main Street Program Administrator for the Southwest Region. I'm joined by Courtney Middley, the Program Manager for Virginia Main Street. This evening, we just want to provide a quick refresh and overview of the Main Street Program, its purpose, and the value that it brings to communities. There we go. So, the Main Street Program is a community-driven framework for revitalizing downtown commercial districts. It is part of a national network of over 2,000 communities and has been in use for more than four decades. What makes it unique is that it's not a rigid model for revitalization. It's adaptable and responsive, shaped by local priorities and rooted in preservation and place-based economic development. Rather than a losing change from above down, Main Street works through broad-based local engagement and leadership. At its core, Main Street is a prudent approach to community development that strengthens local economies. It's a way to reinvigorate your traditional downtown or commercial core, an economic development strategy that leverages your existing assets such as historic architecture and your cultural identity, grassroots bottom-up model shaped by the community's own needs and aspirations. So it's really a framework that respects your history, builds on your existing strengths and assets, and prepares a community for long-term and sustainable growth. And we do this by using the Main Street approach, which is built around transformation strategies, and they are a focused deliberate path to strengthening the local economy. The strategies are informed by a solid understanding of local and regional market data and inclusive community engagement. These strategies are implemented through four core areas of work known as four points: economic vitality, design, permission, and organization, as you can see on the graphic. In Tazewell, they identify strategies for Main Street America are fostering a family-friendly environment, cultivating a quirky entrepreneurial ecosystem, and expanding the potential for tourism. And this approach accomplishes a few things that builds local knowledge and understanding of your district's economy to create a foundation for successful revitalization. It identifies current strengths of business mix and existing business clusters, supplies relevant consumer data to the revitalization program so it can help existing businesses become stronger. It identifies opportunity for future business attraction and expansion, and builds a strategic framework for niche development, including real estate development, business development, promotions, marketing, branding, and I could go on. So, the outcomes of a Main Street approach: Communities that implement the Main Street approach realize significant economic, environmental, and social benefits. These include the revitalization and productive reuse of historic properties, increased collaboration between the public and private sectors, job preservation and creation, a broader tax base, renewed sense of community pride and identity, and a downtown experience that attracts both residents and visitors that want to come again and again. The Main Street Program offers meaningful benefits to all major stakeholders in a community. Business owners experience higher visibility, increased customer traffic, access to educational resources, and funding opportunities. Residents enjoy a more vibrant marketplace, enhance community spirit, and opportunities to participate and share their town's future. Property owners benefit from increased occupancy rates, rise in property values, and design assistance for building improvements. And local governments see a strength in tax base, job creation, and a more coordinated vision for development that bridges the gap between public and private interests. So, Tazewell has already done a lot of stuff with Virginia Main Street, have a lot of really cool projects in the past and that are upcoming. These include a comprehensive downtown building inventory and real estate development strategy, a small area plan specifically for the downtown district, architectural design assistance on four separate projects, a fundraising consultant in 2022, access to statewide trainings and webinars, board and leadership development support, continued use of the Virginia Main Street and Main Street America branding and logos, and ongoing technical assistance and site visits from us and our partners. So that was a really fast rundown. I know I just threw a rock at you, but thank you guys for letting us talk a little bit more about it, and we are happy to answer any questions you might have off the program. Thank you.
So, in 2022, you all did the fundraising consultant workshop. Could you elaborate more on how frequently you do that with municipalities? And then, what's the value add that you've seen before with successes in terms of fundraising after those workshops?
Typically, those are given on an as-needed basis, depending on the community and where it's at. It generally provides a few recommendations and plans for fundraising opportunities. And I would say, I don't know, Courtney, what you think the rate of success is after they receive that service?
I think it really depends on the community. There's not a one-size-fits-all answer to that. And in many cases, we match your energy, so it is what you make it in many cases. We offer a lot of opportunities, but we can't fully implement all of the recommendations for you. That's something that ultimately, your community will have to rally around and pick up and take across and finish on.
What type of objectives do you set or plans do you recommend implementing regarding that? Do you have examples of what you've seen be successful historically?
So, I don't have the fundraising document in front of me. That's something that Tazewell today can definitely share with you, the outcomes and recommendations from that workshop. But just across the mountain in Marion, they utilize a special assessment district, and that is one of the key recommendations that I like to present to communities. It's not going to fill all of the budget. So, in Marion's case, the special assessment district covers about 30% of their budget. In Winchester, it covers a significantly larger portion of their budget. And in Stan, I would say that they're the ones with the largest share of their budget covered by a special assessment district. So, part of it is dependent on the value of the property that is being assessed. And in the case of Marion, it's not Northern Virginia, so the property values are going to be a little bit lower, which means that it's not going to cover as great a part of the budget of the Main Street Program.
So, is that a property tax, like an additional property tax? It's levying on individuals in the municipality?
Not the whole municipality. It's within a district. So, you outline your district, and the properties inside that district are assessed an additional fee. And we find that generally, those are most successful when the property owners are advocating for it because they recognize how it protects the value of their property.
What rates are you looking at? So, you identify Winchester, Stanton, and Marion. How do their rates look like? Is it two cents? Is it... What kind of rates are they looking at in those special assessment districts?
We'll have to get back to you on that. I don't know these numbers off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, we could probably go find that ourselves. So, outside of taxes, what else do successful fundraising ventures look like?
There are many different ways to raise funds. Events is one way. It's not necessarily the way that is going to work for every community. And usually, when you're doing a fundraising event, it's going to have a different look and feel than a special event that brings a lot of people to the downtown. So, fundraising event might actually be pretty low-key and not have as great of a turnout in the same way. Like, you don't want necessarily 10,000 people to show up. Or in Harrisonburg, three years, they did a program called Renaissance Night, and that was a special night for all their very best donors and volunteers, and everybody got dressed up in Renaissance wear. And it was a very Harrisonburg-specific type of an event, but that's when they raised a lot of money. Harrisonburg also does a raffle, and Andrea Donnell would be a good person to follow up with about how they conduct that. Department of Agriculture has taken a greater interest in how raffles are conducted, so there's a little bit of licensing involved with that, I think. But again, nothing holds for that. I would talk to Harrisonburg, but they raised a tremendous amount of money through their raffle program.
Thank you. I don't want to still afford if you don't have anything else. I do have more questions. Okay? And looking at the evaluation criteria, and I think there's six pillars, right, that you look at to do a community self-assessment tool? So, standard three is diversified funding and sustainable program operations. When looking at that, and Ms. Emily, I believe, gave us, or maybe it was Pastor Nate, but they showed us a series of 31 towns and the different levels of funding that are coming from different operations, whether it be locality support, fundraising, just one-off donations. But in looking at the evaluation criteria, what level... I guess it's a twofold question. By what timeframe are you looking for organizations to have a diversified funding source? And what does that look like? Is it a 50-50 split? Is it a 60-40? Each municipality is going to be different because of different, you know, population sizes.
Different communities is going to be different.
So, what have you seen, I guess in a broad brush type stroke, in this evaluation criteria? Are you looking for positive traction? Are you looking... Like, what goes into this evaluation? And what does success look like? From your...
I'm going to let Amy take the first step of that one.
You're referring to the self-assessment, correct?
I am. So, it's titled, let's see, "The Main Street America Evaluation Framework." It's the community assessment tool. I've got the 2023 version, so maybe mine's a bit still. Maybe it hasn't been updated. But yeah, it's standard three, diversified funding and sustainable program operations.
Yeah. So, the self-assessment is where we kind of track progress annually and see if there's any room for improvement, or giving kudos for something that's been being done really well. So, Tazewell Today completes their own part of the assessment, and then we go in and offer our own feedback as well. And we do have a meeting with them as well to discuss all the things covered in standards and self-assessment. And it's really a chance to reflect and identify opportunities such as technical assistance grants and other things like that that could be looked at in the full year.
Okay. How recently have you all had that feedback session with our town?
We just had it in early March, I believe, if I remember right.
Okay. So, about a month ago? Were there any key findings from... I mean, I'm talking about that section, but just in general, what was the feedback that you gave to our town?
I can't remember it all off the top of my head. I'd be happy to try to get you the copy of that report with comments. The Main Street America website is a little wonky, but we can get that to you to review if you'd like. But overall, I'd say Tazewell Today is doing very strong. Of course, with every program, there's always room for improvement, and we are honest with them when we discuss that, and we talk about ways that they can continue to increase and better themselves as an organization.
Yeah. I would say that we're doing pretty well because we just were re-accredited, correct?
Correct. So, that's also the purpose of the meeting and the self-assessment, is to reaffirm accreditation.
Okay. So, no real indicators that you would say apply to each town that participates in this program for what levels of funding that you're looking for from the municipality? Or, I mean, the intent, I think, is to ensure that the program itself doesn't fall in on itself because the municipality has other budget requirements, correct?
Correct. And as Courtney says, it really does look different for every community. We could recommend that you look at similar-sized communities with a Main Street Program and see how their funding system is set up and what that entails. But it's hard to give you an exact number or figure because it's just truly very adaptable for each community.
And I would say it really only has one program that can exist without local government financial support, and that's Gloucester. And the way that Gloucester funds its operations is that they purchased a strip mall that they own and operate, and they use the rents from that property to fund their organization. But because of that, they sometimes have a difficult time engaging local government in priorities for both. So, it is very important to have public-private partnership, and the discussion of finances is one way to reawaken the conversation every year.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to hog the whole time. But regarding the grants, the other thing I was looking at is the grant manual and trying to determine the value that's added by having access to these grants because of the advancing Main Street status. And on the grants manual, you got listed the grant opportunities are the downtown investment grants, which we've been receiving enough, the community vitality grants, CBG, and then the financial feasibility grants. And the maximum awards on those are $75,000, $50,000, $25,000. Is there any look to expand the grants or increase the amount of the awards? Or is it just that's where your pigeonhole at because of the number of towns that participate in these programs?
So, those are the grants that are exclusive to Virginia Main Street, but we have many partners. And oftentimes, our grant leverage into others within our agency. So, a financial feasibility study will often be a first step into the I R F program, and I think right now those are maxing out at $500,000. But those fluctuate depending on the priorities of the General Assembly. They've authorized $2 million in the past. And then, we also have the Community Business Launch Program, which can go up to $90,000 for the purpose of filling vacant storefronts with new and startup businesses. And depending on how some of those programs go and how it fits in with your regional economy, a pilot program with a DIG could leverage into a Go Virginia project, which has happened in Stan in the past. And Go Virginia funds are quite significant depending on the type of project that you pursue. So, don't always think of these as in isolation. They often leverage additional resources down the road by proving a concept and building a relationship.
Right. Every little bit helps, for sure.
There are other things that are out there, too, that are not... That they're just kind of one-offs, like the SMART grant that we have. It's not necessarily something that's listed in paperwork, but that is a grant that we've received because of the Virginia Main Street designation. And then, we're also a part of the...
A R C. So, yeah, we're working with A R C right now to do a series of downtown property surveys and inventories, which will identify real estate redevelopment opportunities and potentially even connect you with some small-scale developers who would like to convert those underutilized buildings or facilities into a more active and vibrant use. And we're doing those in 10 Main Street communities in the Appalachian region. And it's getting a lot of attention in other Main Streets across the border. So, I expect to see my peers from Tennessee, West Virginia, North Carolina, and Kentucky show up at these visits because they're interested in what you're doing. So, the service component is not necessarily a grant, but it does have a dollar value.
For sure. Last question I had for you all, and one of the things we're looking at, because, you know, we do have budget constraints that we're working through tonight. But in regards to the municipalities that are underneath 5,000 people, we're about 4,200 and some change. For these programs, I'm sorry, for the executive director positions, for how many municipalities that have less than 5,000 people have a full-time executive director?
Amy, do you want to look that one up, or do you want me to?
I'll look it up. Just give us one second and find our chart.
Sure. So, I think Galax is less than 5,000, or is it at 5,000?
I think they're over.
They're over?
They're full-time.
Okay. So, right now Cathy Stewart is the only part-time manager in the Appalachian region. Smaller communities often opt for the full-time manager because the work is full-time regardless of what the pay is. I think LaRae is a good example of a community that is under 5,000, and they started with a part-time person, and it became clear to them that she was working more than 40 hours a week and still was only being paid $25,000 a year, and that is illegal now. So, they...
And it's a really tough assignment, too, right? Because you're going to have turnover, you're going to lose the continuity if you perpetually burn out your executive directors who are trying to, you know, recruit and maintain a team of volunteers to run these operations.
Well, actually, Tazewell Today started out with a part-time executive director, and I think within it, it wasn't even a full year that it was transitioned to full-time.
Right.
And it's unitistic right now as a part-time person. And that's where having, if your budget only allows for part-time, then that's where having the memorandum of understanding is really important, to clarify roles and expectations so that if you only have so much budget, then the person is not putting in full-time hours if you can't afford a full-time person. And I think Colonial Beach is an example of a Main Street program where they have a blended role. So, because they're less than 5,000, the Main Street manager is also the economic development director for the entire town. And Orange had that model for a time. So, that's another way that you could potentially look at it. But when it comes to the Main Street part of the work, that always has to report to an independent board of directors that does not report to local government.
Could you all change your reporting requirements to quarterly to lessen the burden on these directors?
Absolutely. So, the reports are monthly, but they can be turned on a quarterly basis.
Okay. And then, this is the last one. I'm not asking any more questions. But the... And I appreciate you taking time to respond. One of the challenges that we faced, and we're looking for legal guidance on it, but as a nonprofit organization, we can do a donation, but then you have a memorandum of understanding for who has what responsibilities, and that looks a lot like a contract. And should municipalities be following procurement because there's an agreement versus just giving a donation and then having a memorandum of understanding that's kind of like a contract? We're getting some...
We've never seen that before. That is... That has never happened.
It's happening here, and it's coming from external pressures. We won't name names. But being called into question on whether or not, if you have a contract or a memorandum of understanding, that you should follow procurement guidelines.
So, right now, the town of Tazewell has a memorandum of understanding with Tazewell Today and Virginia Main Street. That's not a contract. It's a memorandum of understanding, and it outlines what is expected of all three parties. So, the local government MOU with Tazewell Today is probably a more detailed variation on that, but it's not required by Virginia Main Street that you have one. I just think it's a good practice when you regularly have questions about who's doing what and what your expectations are.
So, you all haven't seen that type of... You all haven't seen that type of legal pressure outside of us just bringing it up now?
Correct.
Okay.
I can tell you, I also asked... D H C D got me in touch with the Center for Nonprofit Excellency, and they've never heard of that as well.
So, it may be bluster.
Well, and how, I mean, if you do, if you go through procurement, you're supposed to get multiple bids from multiple people, but... Or multiple companies. What other company ties the Main Street designation?
I mean, if you don't have other businesses that apply for that, because if you, I mean, if your schedule has a grant coordinator and events or whatever, coordination, then there may be somebody who pops up. But if you don't have anybody else who's competing, then you have the ability to do a sole-source procurement. I think that's my understanding of it. So, okay. Well, thank you again. I know I've been the one just asking questions, but I appreciate you all taking time to respond.
We're happy to provide information at any time.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you, ladies, for your time. We do appreciate you.
Absolutely. Have a good night.
Thank you. So, next one down the line is economic development.
So, last week, we kind of hovered around this topic, and from what I gather, everyone likes the idea of an economic development person. We had discussed a little bit with salary, and that line, can you pull that up?
We had discussed a little bit with salary and that line. Can you pull that up? So our goal here tonight is to be done when we leave because we have to get this in the paper next week. So I mean, now is the time to ask questions, to get it all figured out.
Okay. So this is.
You started.
No, I started, I think last meeting I tried to lay down what my vision was. And by the end of the meeting, it kind of got brought down to kind of a, let's get our toe wet first and see what happens. Let's not start swinging right out the bat to some high, high level, you know, higher paid individual. And I, I think I conceded back to them as long as we can start getting someone whose direct focus is from all over our corporate limits, to start focusing on economic development. My vision in my head, is that what I envisioned and wanted? No, but if I can get a start, I mean, a little bit's better than nothing.
So what division is person doing?
The, the part-time, I'm working with our businesses, working with corporations, contacting people, working with Tasswell Today on things that they have going on and kind of, well, big thing is we have a lot of whatnot. So her meeting with Tasswell Today, you have to, you know, keep track of everything going on there. This person will also be, you know, part of that, you know, that would be part of their goals. But I think just if we're, if the bicycle or the mountain biking trail comes to fruition, there's someone that reaches out to these organizations that hold these big events, getting part of, the town being part of these cycles that go through that hold, you know, some kind of tournaments, but races that bring, you know, tons of people in.
Wouldn't that be part of what your rent director does?
That's, that's how they're doing it in camp. They've got a hand in it.
Love the hat.
Thank you.
I would suggest that this person builds a relationship with the county economic director also. And then works hand in hand, especially on the mountain biking project if we do it out there. That's as much as a county project as it is a town project because it's in the county. Y'all know it's town property. So I would think building a relationship with the county economic director and the county I E B A, you know, possibly leveraging them as a extra revenue source for, for town businesses would be a great.
Attending board supervisor meetings and, you know, discussing our, our outlook and what we plan to do and try to solicit, you know, assistance by them would be important too.
I think in that position, you would, you would really lean on your town manager to, to be that liaison. And then at this role, at this pay rate, you have, you have, she has another tool that she can use to increase her workload and get more done effectively. You know, we need to look at this beyond just one year. And we, we did that in January. We laid out a series of events that we want to build into our comprehensive plan. And there's much work to be done, you know, with the sewer, like right now, I don't know. When are you, you're not really finished because you'll have grant requirements to follow up with regarding the 460 water line project and the sewer treatment plant facility operating. So it's not really done.
It's just getting started.
It, it continues. So the end of life cycle on those would probably be 10 years. I don't, like, I guess we may have to that and then stop.
Route 460 project is the 18-month project and sewer treatment is, isn't it also an 18-month?
I'd say.
So, but I mean, that's start to finish work. You're going to have your request for disbursements and, you know, track all your expenses. You've got to get all that documentation. We have a monthly meeting on each of those.
Wait, so you have a start date?
We are planning on starting Route 460 in May. We literally, Jessica, Susan and I are working today getting pipe waters in. We've already got some materials, but we're getting ready to work on it. So May, end toward the end of May. So we want to try to do it when school's out. That section there from Finn Castle Motor Inn down to Hardee's. That way we can detour traffic via Vin Bolt, not have any kind of school traffic. And we want to have that back open before school opens back.
So multi-year project or comprehensive plan sets out for five years. And I don't like five-year experiments, right? Kind of talk about that with O T R, looking at stock and demonstrating progress. So I'm really keen on trying new things. You know, we have an aggressive agenda that are, that are set full of achievable targets that we want to hit. And, and then adding bandwidth to get those done in an expeditious manner. So I think that you need to increase bandwidth and then you're going to work that very hard.
Would this be a full-time, part-time?
At $45,000, you can have a full-time.
The way that it's in here now, if they have budgets, so it'll be full-time.
So the total cost goes 67 with the no.
Initially starting out, do you have need for full-time? Do you have to work for them? I mean, is that something that is going to add on to you? I mean, I know it's going to take some things off of you, but you're going to have to be overviewing someone. You're going to have to pretty much create a whole new department.
So if we go for this mountain biking and we do seek any grants, that person can seek those grants. We did apply for a recreation grant. We did finally receive word, but they're still in the process of announcing any type of word, but, you know, that person can help with that. That person can help with, you know, kind of like what I said, once we get everything built with this mountain biking, like get torn us up like that. And I get, that could fall under recreation. Absolutely, I get that. But helping to advertise, helping to get people here, helping to bring people in our town, helping to talk to these businesses to say, hey.
But there's a lot of if we get this, if we get this. So are we getting a person before we get the ifs?
All right. So we, we have businesses now. One of the things that I said in my interview was I would like to go out to these businesses and meet the people and say, hi, I'm the town manager from the town. Is there anything the town can do for you? If you need anything, please feel free to call us. I can't get out of my chair. I, I physically just cannot get the time to go do that. This person could help me do that. This person could improve those relationships between town and businesses. That way businesses feel heard and are heard. And they can help with business retention. You know, if, if a business is having issues, then this person can help be that liaison to me to say, you know, well, hey, we, you know, we're having trouble with a piece of equipment. Do you know anything that can help us? Oh, well, you know what I didn't hear about is grant. I mean, it can help with stuff like that.
I just don't know that there's the work there starting out for full-time.
I've got a great test to start out. So one of the things that we, we just addressed, and we, we started this back in the fall of last year. And one of the challenges that when you have, like right now, we've got a really good I E B A team and they're leaning forward and hard charging, but nobody has the bandwidth to evaluate our Virginia Enterprise Zone incentives in a, in a way that looks at it comprehensively, right? If I'm going to look at these incentives and see how we pair up to Marion, how we pair up to Whitfield, like we were, we were hit with that in the fall of last year. And we spent a lot of time evaluating it, but from a group of volunteers who were serving without pay, you're not going to get the level of analysis that you're looking for when it comes time to actually evaluate our incentives and see whether or not we're competitive with other municipalities. So right out of the gate, that's, there's two months of work right there. And, and on top of all these other things, right? Like the email that we just received regarding the workforce development opportunity from, was that a Ginger Brain? Right? Send it out. You know, items like that, liaisoning with local businesses. Because I was receiving it on the email, I've already contacted them and I'm lining up to hopefully, hopefully get one of, one of our employees lined up to get education, buzz up stuff like that. Like local businesses have a need for items like that, the support that can come from the government. But because they're running small businesses, they don't have the time to go out and look for themselves. A liaison like you, this would be a tremendous value add for something like that. So you can evaluate the incentives. You know, we have, we have a conflict right now between our E B A and our, so our.
Entrepreneurial business attraction.
Business attraction grant and our, our Virginia Enterprise Zone incentives. And they don't necessarily marry up deliberately because we want to be able to extend the E B A to be more flexible than we have with the Virginia Enterprise Zone requirements. So coming up with a policy and procedure for that is something that this individual can do. And that's very important because we don't want to get into a position of, I love our I E B A. They're, they're super gung ho, but we want to get in a position where we're overextending. And we don't have protocol in place. We haven't seen this type of bike forum. So immediately in the first year, you can have significant impact. And they're not voting, right? But they are bringing recommendations based on research and then presenting to us to advise how you would implement these types of incentives. I see a lot of work to do. Yeah, I was one of the frustrating things from back in my I E B A days, back in 2020. It's like, well, we don't have anything to discuss. It's like, we're, we're in an area with a declining population or tax base is dwindling and we don't have anything to talk about? It's like, what are we actually aiming at? So with our objectives, and one of the things we've, we've talked about deliberately is we do have rescue money that's still allocated in a, in a specific pool for an event that's never going to occur. We have these objectives lined up. We should budget out these objectives, set up a comprehensive plan, which we, we have to do this year, and then add the bandwidth and send, send them marching. So if you want to, if we actually want to achieve achievable goals, which we've identified, this, this is how you add bandwidth to get that done. And that's my opinion.
So can I have direction that we move forward with what we've got presented or changes? I mean, this is your house. Time to tell me.
I like what you have presented.
I, I think, a personal opinion, of course, I, I think, and give what you pay for and getting someone in 45K and laying all the work that we're just laying out might be different. You, you might, but it would be.
It's going to test you as a manager.
I'll get my.
You can, I'll make you that.
What are the educational requirements? Because, you know, like that person would be like more of me. But anyway, but like, which is, that's not a call, but.
Harvard.
Harvard?
Yeah.
Is it? Okay. Biology degree or any big ones? Uh, but yeah, what would be your educational, like what would be your requirements for economic development?
I think that's something we'd have as we're working out the job description. That's going to take a little bit of time to.
I don't know. I mean, all the things you laid out, that's, that's very multifaceted. And that person would have to be like, I know and I'm going to do all the things.
Yeah.
Like.
It's going to take you weeks, months of person, yeah, that's a go-getter and very personable and just run on caffeine and confidence.
Yeah. And so I, I don't have that yet. I wasn't sure if this was their out of promoting. No, but I just think, yeah, 45, that's, that's a lot.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Didn't really get anything.
I'll be here in a minute.
Where are the funds for the events in this budget?
Okay. It's kind of going to lead us a little bit on down the budget, but let's, let's roll with something else here. So 45 salary, we have all their fringes, we have some office supplies, we have $10,000 miscellaneous expense. I'm going to tell you why here in just a second. So let's go on down in our budget. Mayor slash town council economic development. This is your donations that you give out. This is your four-county transit system that we support. So I didn't change anything. It is still $32,000. Now, here's another area that we're going to have to discuss. And it's the Tasswell Today donation one item. I just went by what was in conversation from last year, that budget work session. And what I understood was, you know, just like we were talking about other big donations, they're going to have to start trying to be more self-sufficient. We're, we're glad it's support. We're glad it's here. However, we were looking to cut back some. So last year Tasswell Today donation was $75,000. And I'm sorry, when I say last year, I mean the year we're in right now.
Sure.
Um, so for the next year, I have got $50,000 in there for Tasswell Today. Now, those are two big key hitters. Where do we go with this budget with those? Because I just took the conversation from last year. If, if we want, we can leave it. If we want, we can change it. This is you outs that have to direct me.
I would just like you all to see, this is Tasswell's today's budget with us paying for events.
Plug it in.
Sure. This is basic numbers. So this is if Tasswell Today is expected to pay for events with $50,000. This is their next year.
Is the red bad?
The red is very bad. So you see that red that starts in August. We cannot exist in the red.
It's kind of an eye chart, but what we're seeing is it's funded through like October and then there's no funding for the remainder of the fiscal, oh, you guys operate on a calendar.
That is with funds coming in from the town every quarter. You see those jumps that go up?
So the question would be, how are you going to manipulate your budget to accommodate what events do you have?
We can't. We cannot pay for events.
Tell me, tell me two events you pay for.
We pay for Easter. We just paid almost $800 for Easter. We pay for, everything is 4th of July except the fireworks. We pay for Main Street moments. We pay for the town portion of the Veterans Parade. We pay for Trump retreat. We pay for the Winter Market, Christmas parade. So if there is any, any event that we put on for the town, Tasswell Today pays for it. That is part of the Tasswell Today donation.
And then the, you know, I noticed on the, so the fiscal year for the end of 24, the, the total town donations were up to 84.
That's because of the change in the year.
Oh, yeah.
Where we're calendar year and the town is, yeah. So that's, yeah, all of our reports are on a calendar year and where we were receiving more in, was it 23? Yeah.
The end of 23 for us.
The end of 23 for us, which went into 24 for us. You know, it's, that was the, the overlap.
So the.
So my question, out of the donation, whatever amount it is that the town gives, none of that's for events?
The $75,000 that the town currently gives us, we allocate about $25,000 of that towards events.
And when we funded that last year, it was based on the total cost of the events for the year prior.
Correct.
And so when pulling that number. And so when pulling that number, and taking it to seventy-five, the events cost sixty-five, and then we gave a ten thousand dollar buffer. I, I know you probably sent me that, but.
The events cost sixty-five thousand?
In total.
In total.
Oh, in total, I'm sorry.
Two, two, two years prior. So the, there's direct correlation between events and, and the funding. And, um, and I don't know what the, like, so we should, if, if that's the case, and we're running about the same operation, then you should just have a twenty-five thousand dollar shortage, if you, if you drop to fifty from seventy-five. If we're, if we're doing the same dog and bone show, year after year, you have cost of goods increase a, a bit, you know.
May I have that? Is it okay if I speak?
Well, yeah.
Okay. Um, and I, I only discussed this at least one time before. Part of the, the, the main street designation is you're required to have an executive director. Because of the size of our town, we're, we're on the bubble, part-time, full-time. But I know in previous years, the conversation was had here, long before I was involved, that there's too much work for a part-time executive director. Maybe hours is what my, I, I don't speak tall, there's no need for that tonight. But if we're paying a full-time executive director, plus there's the, you know, indirect costs to administration expenses, plus events. I, I think, I think maybe we're not taking all that into consideration.
So that's part of the reason, we spent a lot of time talking with them regarding the fundraising.
I'm sorry, I couldn't be here.
Yeah, that, oh, I'm sorry, um, so we just had a couple representatives from the DHC D come, uh, and they, they zoomed in, they spoke to us regarding the program, and just kind of gave a, a general overview. You know, short on specifics, but, but we spent time discussing the evaluation criteria, and looking at the level of fundraising that should be occurring from an organization like this. Because over time, and, and part of the program, like, part of the evaluation criteria is making sure that an organization like this has diversified funding, because municipalities' budgets flex. They, they fluctuate over time. And since two years ago, when we gave a hundred thousand dollars, the announcement was made, and I know there's turnover and stuff, but hey, we're looking for this organization to be more self-suspicious. Google just decided to listen to that. But, uh, be more self-suspicious, and then we just come off a calendar year where there's certain, there's, there's ten thousand dollars fundraisers, right? So we've got three police cruisers that, three, three ambulances that need to be replaced, and we've got two police cruisers that are over a hundred fifty thousand miles. Like, we're actually in a hard place between responsibilities and, and then want-tos. And that's ultimately where it comes down to, and that's part of the reason for, not, not cutting it because you need events or you hate TASM, or the organization, the organization's good, but we also have responsibilities that we're leaving on the table, because we're hoping to get a USDA grant in the Doge economy, you know, that we're, that we're into now. But it's, it's a balance between wants and responsibilities.
So is a want, like, Main Street moment, like, is that a want? Like, you know, like, the Easter stuff, like, is that a want? I mean, I'm just asking, like, cause I think about it too, cause I'm, okay, so we do events.
They are all a want, any events are a want.
Sure.
Yes.
I'm going to let you tell the population that.
Okay, if I quit paving roads, because, yeah, so, no, I'm just saying, the town government is responsible for it.
You're getting, so we, you know, like, we get a lot of, if you're not doing stuff on Facebook, if you're not doing events, if you're not doing whatever, then you must not be doing anything. And so there's a lot of, like, background stuff that, you know, with the grants and the, I mean, we've been to several meetings about, you know, looking at maps, like, of the town, and figuring out, like, what's going on, is that.
Definitely not downplaying that.
And the public doesn't get that. The public goes, if I bring my kid to the park, and they don't get an egg, I'm going to be mad. So, you know, like, so, which is, I don't, you know, I have all teenagers, it's not a big deal, but. Or, or Main Street Moments doesn't.
Well, yeah, it, it'd be a right, I, I did, I'm not downplaying the importance of having them, I'm just trying to lay out that.
Sure.
There's certain things that.
Yeah.
This leadership board is responsible for.
Sure.
Water, sewer, your police, EMS, kind of, I mean, we're not a hundred percent responsible. If we didn't have it, the county would have to do it. And, uh, fire department. And those are, those are musts, those are things we have to do. So I'm not downplaying the importance in how the general public views having events, because yes, they are important. I'm, I'm just saying, in a kind of broad, more grand.
I'm, I'm just confused, cause all I've heard for five years, like.
People love their events, we're such a presence that people enjoy.
Yeah, no, it's my bad.
So the events that directly correlate with the mill's tax that, that we, we collect, right? Mill's tax, not a trivial, uh, line item in our budget, right, it's north of a million dollars. So, and, and our community, and our community donations, and this is like, you know, bigger picture, looking at each of these different sections of the budget, our community donations are approximately, if we do what's on, on the sheet here, are two point five percent of our total budget. So that's the margin that, that we're working on. One of the, one of the items that we, Ms. Emily and I talked about, and, and Ms. Liam, in a different conversation, is looking at, you know, well, one, our, our emergency fund funded approximately twenty-eight percent. I believe we crossed the numbers on it, it's about twenty-eight percent. Virginia Resource Authority, uh, so it's one point nine million dollars that we have sitting in the emergency fund, is that correct?
That's not too much.
It should be on the sheet, uh, or anyway, we could pull that data randomly quickly. Virginia Resource Authority recommended that our, our general fund, emergency fund be funded about twenty-five percent, if that's correct.
That's correct.
So, you know, we're having these discussions about where to make deliberate cuts in order to make, you know, to uphold our responsibilities, and angle that we could look at this. And I think it's a temporary solution. My opinion is, is that TASM today needs to work better on fundraising. Because it's part of the, it's part of the requirements for measuring, evaluating the program. Being diversified in refunding sources prevents you from having budget cuts on the town side, now TASM today can't, can't operate past October, right? So this is.
We could operate, we just can't do events. If we don't do events, we'd be just fine. But fifty thousand, we could just not do events.
So that pays what?
Hmm? That pays for operational costs. Operational costs for TASM today usually run between sixteen, sixty-five thousand.
Right, so, or conversely, you know, you cut, you cut events, and you reduce to a part-time salary. But the point of discussing the emergency fund is, we're overfunded on that approximately three percent. You could match, you could take your emergency fund down to twenty-five percent and be able to meet all of your obligations. I think you could get close there. If we're looking at a way to accommodate everyone, then finding, like, making cuts in other areas, and, and pulling from your emergency fund that's, according to VRS, three percent overfunded, that's, you know, approximation, we got to go look at the actual numbers. But you, you can manipulate the budget that way to accomplish each of these goals.
Well, I guess, and then you look at everything, so like, events would be considered expendable? Expendable, like, things, like, tour, well, is it, is it part of tourism? Do you guys look at it like that? Do you guys look at it as a, like, a revital, like, a revitalization of the town? Just because, I mean, cause it's like, you know, it's on the website, it's on, you know, like, it's pictures of smiling people on Main Street, like, and so if we can't, I mean.
I think I'd lump it in the more economic development.
Economic development?
Yeah, and, and some, a lot of people do travel in for Main Street Moments, but, uh, you can't say, Main Street Moments is part of tourism. I mean, you, you can't say Trump, Trump Retreat is part of tourism, so you can't say.
I don't know, you get a lot of people from.
Well, we do, we do, we do, we get a lot of people.
Probably got a bunch of people from West Virginia for the Easter account.
Hey, free pool days, almost every car in, in Lincoln Towns.
Well, then, well, I was just talking, I was just thinking about, like, well, the train station budget, or the, you know, like, that would be, that would be kind of a one.
I would go for that.
You guys want to say, like, that's kind of the same, so I'm like, I'm like as like. Like, so if we're looking at, oh, we're looking at this, we're looking at this, this is a full, I mean, this is a full, like, you know, I mean.
So TASM today's main function would become a fundraising?
No, it's, it's, it's certainly part of the year old's function, yeah. Uh, based on their, their requirement.
It would literally have to become almost its main function then, in order to sustain it, right?
No.
If we're doing events.
Yeah, if we're, in order to do events.
Maybe you always charge for events. I was always.
I also know to make a profit, okay.
Can I do that?
Uh, that was something that a previous executive director was told by a previous town manager, that said, absolutely not, you cannot charge for events.
But, but you can look for sponsorships on events, I've seen lots of municipalities do that.
And just last year, because our, most recent executive director had done away with vendor fees. We've reinstituted vendor fees, um, and we're going after sponsorships. Yeah.
So what's your goal?
I have a few things.
What's, what's your goal for this upcoming year?
What do you mean, what's my goal?
In terms of fundraising.
My fundraising, let's see.
And you told us about bingo, and I think it's going to be a.
Yeah, we're doing bingo, right now in my work plan, I have that very, very conservative, because I don't know how it's going to go. Let me pull up my work plan.
So I understand from other organizations that bingos are very popular, they're very successful, but isn't there only a limit on how many you can have a year?
There is.
How many is that?
Can you just call it bingo?
Um, we can not bring in, and this is not, you know, our net profit, this is gross. We cannot bring in over forty thousand dollars any year.
Oh, on bingo?
Yeah, no chance to make forty thousand.
That's, that's bingo, that's raffles, that's cold tabs, that's any of that.
Every month, okay. Everybody's. We're starting all kinds of different organizations. So I definitely think bingo is a great fundraiser, and it's a, it's a great opportunity. I'm, I'm going to switch back just a tiny bit. There's ten thousand dollars in that economic development line item. I mean, is, is that what we need to use to have Main Street Moments? I don't know, that.
Why, but the MLEJ right now is fifteen-five.
What, what does that cover?
That covers, uh, six thousand dollars for bouncing houses. And about six thousand dollars for a name, big headliner band.
And that's for both days?
That is for both days. Then you have the other amount that will be filled in entertainment throughout the day. So let me fill in my work plan.
I know at one of the other meetings, there hadn't been anything officially scheduled.
No, I have not scheduled anything.
Okay.
And it's just going to get more expensive.
I think part of that not scheduling is waiting to see what the budget was going to look like, so we can have a plan.
Yeah, I do think, almost, you know, you do not, because our, our fiscal years don't line up that, that, that stays.
That's a problem.
Yeah. Or we just start budget, we get a budget down in January every year, it's just.
That's right.
So historically, how was TASM, or, uh, Main Street Moments funded? Was it from the line up to town?
Well, I.
How it takes?
I think that's only been the last three years.
Uh, it's been for quite a while. Uh, before that, um, like, say, twenty nineteen. Um, because I believe Amanda was the executive director then, and she spent the money and Todd paid for it. Or she committed the money.
So, so I'm, I'm getting something, so for this upcoming, if historically, the town's donation helped, or went towards Main Street Moments, we're still in your budget here, Main Street Moments is in January, so shouldn't there be funding?
Main Street Moments in, is in, okay, my budget for twenty twenty-five, I have to set that before I know what we're getting. So I set my budget, like, we're getting seventy-five. So I have to just guess. Which is one of the reasons in the MOU that was presented, it had a minimum amount so we could plan. You know, whatever that minimum amount is, I'm not negotiating that, I'm not saying anything about that, but that is to assist us in planning, so we can know for sure what we're going to have.
What was the minimum on that?
There wasn't, it was a blank.
Well, you know, one of the good things that you gave us was this, uh, advancing Main Street program revenue. I wish it had the community's names on it.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I have one that has some of the community's names on it, however, I would need to ask the community if I can disclose that information.
Yeah, and you, you've got an average on here for these programs. I guess one of the things that I think this is kind of zooming out a little bit, because for example, if we get a DIG grant, like we currently have, right? For the mini park for, for, for this green space area.
That, that DIG grant is, um, DHCD is allowing us to reallocate it to be something that the SMART grant identified.
Okay.
So, uh, that is, it hasn't been decided what that's to be used for yet, but we have that to use for something in this area.
It's just, it's, it's a no, it's collecting interest, but, uh.
No, it's not.
Can you remind us what DIG stands for?
Um, Down Town Development Grant.
By zooming out, like, for example, with the former director of TASM today, with a mission set and wanting to see, like, a children's museum built, I'm talking like, five, seven million dollar project. If these aren't in our comprehensive plan, we're not strategically aligned, we're fighting against each other. So that causes friction, that, that's undue. But it's like, you do great, great work, you're going out and getting grants, like, hey, look at this, we got money. But if it's not part of the comprehensive strategy, then it's like, we're, we're, are we going to one-off? Where are we going to take, you know, this color of money to reallocate it here? I don't know how we, like, that's zooming out, because it's, it's not what I want to talk about in this moment. But, um, that's, that's an area of improvement that needs to occur, because we need to build that in.
Yes, absolutely, we do, we need to coordinate so that everybody is on the same page, and we know exactly what we're going for.
Right, and, and that's, that's part of the reason for a comprehensive plan, because everything's just, you line them up, you knock them down. Like, that's the way I kind of operate. But, you know, in that revenue, program revenue that you gave us, we got an average, and there's some outliers, so we really need, like, the median number, but the average town, and we, I guess you've got the population sizes here.
Yeah.
But I, I guess the ranges look, you know, between fifty and seventy, uh, seventy-five thousand, and a little bit less. So we're, we're, we're not, we're not too far off in.
Let me see.
Compared to other localities, as far as the donation goes, towards, towards, uh, an organization like this.
I can tell you, that one that I highlighted right there, is one of your closest Main Street communities.
That, what does that mean?
That is a Main Street community that is around us.
So is that married?
I didn't say that.
Can you not say that?
I have not asked if I can disclose that information.
I guess.
And it's thrown in the.
She could tell you, but she didn't.
Well, you know, and, and that's, it's worth discussing, right? And so the numbers you showed me, just, just for, like, is, is a town that's investing three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, a little more than. And, um, you know, we don't know what their, we don't know what their total projects look like. Maybe this is a one-time investment to build an amphitheater, or get a new, you know, acquire a piece of property, maybe like.
Yeah, like yearly or.
Right, and so.
That's yearly.
So we've got a snapshot, but it's one of the things that we talked about, like, we, we do, we do know that the events have a correlation to mill taxes, mill taxes are becoming a large part of the, uh, the budget. We hope to gain visitors from outside of the area to, to pay these things, right? That's not on the backs of our locals, we're trying to take outside folks' money, put it in, to, to our streets. But, uh, you know, I was relatively disappointed a couple of years. But uh, you know, I was relatively disappointed a couple of years ago when we gave a hundred thousand dollars looking for better events and it's, 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 we haven't seen much diversity in our events. It's pretty simple. And then, you know, the lack of shifting course, like I, I beat up the ice skating, you know? Cause we've got the ice skating rink that, that continues to lose money and we suck the money into purchasing it. It's a cool thing that some people like to do, but we, we can't, like, and not everything's profitable. Easter's never gonna be profitable, right? It's not, it's not about that. Main Street Moments is about the culture of the town and having a historical event that we, everybody collectively loves.
Events really are not profitable.
Right.
So why wouldn't the ice skating come under recreation as part of it? I mean, what, really?
Right, how would, that's what I'm getting at.
What do we pay him for during the winter months? I mean, we need to look at that.
I don't think, you know, even Tassels today, we had any problem. Let the town take the ice skating rink over.
Right, but we gotta pivot in order to make you all more, you know, more comfortable.
Okay, so I can tell you, the one that I highlighted there is one of the closest Main Street communities. Another one, the, the very last one is also another closest Main Street community.
And, and who knows what, well, it says.
These are all advancing Main Street, advancing Main Street status.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think just depends on where you're, I mean, that's, that's really where we are in the conversation. It's just, are, is, do you have the budgets to meet your responsibilities and do you want tos? Events are want tos. Having adequate EMS vehicles and, and police cars are, are not the main. And we know that we've got three of those.
Well, I think the main thing is that years ago, town council decided that they wanted to use the Main Street model for economic development. And is that still what you wanna do or not?
Well, when the program is primarily focused around facade improvement and not actual industry, like, I, I don't know how that, that's, that's a tremendous value add. Like, for example, like, I remember, like, years back, looking at a facade improvement plan that I think was generated from DHCD and it's, it's, it's nice, it's a great concept. But what industry do you have in order to, to allow the business to invest that much money into it? And we've got incentives with the real property investment grant with the Virginia Enterprise Zone, but if, being like crude on it, it's, it's more about how to paint it up, how to paint it up versus.
The thing that's coming up in August is gonna be great for businesses. The art funding that Corbin was talking about. That is somebody coming in that is gonna evaluate the market, that is gonna evaluate the building, that is going to give investors ideas of what they could use that building for with cost analysis and with ways to get that.
Are you referring to the property north Tassels, Southern Farmers Market?
No, sir.
Which property are you referring to?
I am talking about all of Main Street.
So is that, is that a Main Street, like, they're coming to do that?
Mm-hmm, Susan and I attended a kickoff meeting yesterday.
So what do you think we have to offer?
What do I think we have to offer?
What direction are we in?
For Main Street?
Yeah.
Well, I think that the Wayfair opening is amazing. And she came to me last year to bring the musicians to town for Main Street Moments. You know, she didn't come to town council, she came to Tassels today.
What's your personal opinion on that?
That's my personal opinion.
Do you think it will work?
I do think it will work.
Have you ever driven through town in the winter on a Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday? You can look on this in the town, you can see all the way up.
I understand that.
We have a.
And that's something that we're trying to change.
Oh, yeah, but our population is different. We have an older population.
We do have an older population, but if you have a music center, that will bring in other populations.
Not during the winter?
Maybe not during the winter.
A business can't sustain itself with five good months. And then you have seven months that you don't make anything. May, June, July, August, September, you could have great months. But then in October, everything starts going up, your utilities and everything, and it's hard to make it. I mean, you know, I have a little business, Airbnb, and I made no money this winter. But my electric bills, you know, I think the month of January, I might have one booked. Why? Because we, we didn't have nothing to offer, we didn't have nothing to bring to town. And then we have that class of people, and I hate to say it, they don't work. They're not gonna spend money at a music venue because they're spending money to buy a pack of cigarettes. And we don't have anything to draw them during those months to town. Now, summer months, I mean, it's great. But.
I'm sure that they have done the research.
Well.
Well, and, and we already discussed too.
How is it solved?
I don't think it is, mother nature's a lady and she's undefeated.
Well, you know, that's part of the reason, like, why would we look at the mountain, mountain biking venture? It's because that, that season is warmer than the other cycles.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's no shade. I don't know how to battle the weather.
You know, this facade thing, I said it in a meeting, what, two years ago? But, you know, your building has a nice facade. There's nobody to look at, who's going in?
Yeah, I look at it this way too, though, so, um, so the, the tourism, the, the motorcycles, the four-by-fours, the mountain biking, that's, that's kinda like a foothold for a lot of larger industries to come in because when they see a town and they go, yeah, you know, they, we, we kinda see they've been hit economically, but that's okay because look at all the stuff they're doing and they got some, some, you know, they're, they're kinda coming up. And so people, people, it's really hard to get the first person to come in and go, yeah, we're gonna invest in this town. But it's really easy, well, it's easier to get the second, third, fourth, and fifth. So I, you know, I, I kinda see it that way, but, but man, I, Danny, I, I love your story that you told, so, like, yeah. And um, um, furniture climbers.
Well, yes, I mean, I'm not looking away, looking to do away with events because I think our taxpaying citizens deserve them. And it does bring, you know, people that grew up here back to town. But at the same time, you know, it's like the mayor says, you know, our EMS, our police, you know, those things have to come first.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, I'm looking at too, like, other funding, I mean, it's, again, I, it's, it's hard to say no, but like, there's a lot of times where I've been asked to do a lot of things and it's, it's rough and I, you know, sponsorships are, are, are rough. And so I'm asking our businesses to sponsor more events, to pay for bands, to do things when we're already.
Cause you know winter's coming.
Winter's coming, uh, yeah, no, I, yeah. I like.
Yeah, and, you know, our population is locals unfortunately don't support local. That, that's, that's what I've seen over the past five years of being here, is our locals go to Bristol. Yeah, on the weekends or whatever, and, and it, it's hard, I, I'd wish a lot more would decide to hit our local restaurants or things that we have here.
I see the comments about, there's a lot of positive comments, I'm excited about the soul food restaurant.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, and uh, but there, there's a lot, we want another restaurant, like, really? Like, come on, guys, like, wow, man, like.
Did you buy any shopping grants?
I did.
I did.
They have a lot of bulk items and stuff, yeah, I did actually.
Grants.
Yeah, well, they, they wanted to buy a building and they couldn't buy it. But anyway.
Go ahead, man.
Is, and if I'm, again, it, it's not my job to go wrong with the budget. It does, that. But is there a, is there a middle ground between the seventy-five thousand and the fifty thousand? For the next year, is there like a, I don't wanna say sixty-two fives, that's probably the middle. Is there sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand, is there a number that we can?
I mean, I would, I would work backwards from your emergency fund. And I know the town manager hates that because town manager's like, I don't know, let's get, you know, we'll put, we could possibly come up.
Yeah, I don't know when that ambulance will blow another transmission or whatever, but it's.
That's already in our budget.
I mean, seriously, like, if we're actually trying to troubleshoot this problem solve, like, that, that is one area where you could still be within the DRS. Have it properly funded, right? Twenty-five percent they're asking for. I mean, take a look at it and then see how much budget it's like that you, you can create to do either events or buying ambulances. Like, I, I listened to Chief talk about those and us and, and Doge, right? It's, it's all going on, US, USDA probably not gonna fund us again because we've got the capital that's sitting there from recovery monies.
And he told me that, it's not looking good.
Right.
I have, I have a question. We've already gone over buying an ambulance and building it into the budget. So why are we comparing events to something that we've already decided is a budget?
You're down two, you're down two ambulances.
Yeah, we have two ambulances in there. We have one that's been on order for quite a while and another one that we were gonna buy.
We're down three police cruisers, I've got one budget.
I've got a solution.
Yeah.
Can I go give us a couple of things?
Is it um, something you chief might have discussed before?
We bought, it was, it was. Apparently done, I'll say.
They bought.
It, it was, I don't think it was completely done. That's why I haven't brought it up because I'm not comfortable with it and neither is Chief. Um, we asked for a five-year, we got a one-year.
I have a four-year.
It's, it's just not. That is a, a later discussion, but yes, we're looking at that.
I think, I mean, not to have a lead here, but I mean, they, they turned their fleet over and this is the one they can all afford to do there.
What, they're talking about leasing police cruisers? So we have met with Enterprise twice. Um, we asked for some numbers, they gave numbers at four twenty-one, the day of the budget work session last week. And I was not comfortable presenting those numbers because it, I don't feel that it's a complete package. And I'm not presenting it until I'm confident in it.
Yeah.
Um, so let's, let's roll back for just a second. Ice skating. Emily, how much does that cost Tassels today?
Last year. Do you want it by season?
Um, sure.
Okay. Because, you know, it straddles years.
Nice.
Yeah, it does make it complicated when you're trying to do one thing.
If you don't have an exact amount, like a range is perfectly fine.
I don't know range, I'm not good with that.
I think you should.
And in this, you have your, um, I know that you had electrical hookup. I know that you had um, a storage rental facility, uh, from a storage building. I know you had employees that you had to pay, so what?
January, three, December twenty twenty-four, showing that operating avenue, negative two thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars ninety-six cents.
Okay, for the season last year, so twenty twenty-four into twenty twenty-five, it was negative two thousand twenty-eight twelve.
I mean, is that what it cost you?
What did it cost you?
Yes, what, what is your cost? I, I'm not talking like how much money did you make?
Right.
Like, what did you spend?
We spent two thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Okay, so what if the recreation department took the skating rink over? We put it on tennis courts, it's out there, Greg handles it. We pay the employees, we get the admission charge. It'll offset some, not all. And that frees up twenty-five hundred dollars from Tassels today.
How many employees do we got out there?
The year of the winter.
Two, so.
Now, we would have to probably get some, what I would call seasonal help. Um, do it Thanksgiving to mid-years, whatever. It depends on whether, if it's not as cold in January, you have to do it a little bit more. But what if we take that? Alleviate it from Tassels today, that gives them a little bit more stretch of power.
And then does that take it from being looked at as a, a loss each year? And do we just say, well, it's wrecked, that's not a money-making endeavor?
Right, so the, the year before, so the twenty-three, twenty-four season, now we did operate further into um, twenty-four, which was into January and February, which I would not recommend doing that because that's where we lost the money.
Okay.
We netted out two hundred forty-three sixty-six. So it was almost a break even, but the year before that.
Was the year before that, that wasn't the inaugural year though, right?
The year before that, I believe, was the inaugural year.
I know it was, it's just like restaurants, you know, when they.
Right. The, the year before that, we made, the net was five thousand four hundred ten.
Wow. But that's, that's.
That was the inaugural year. And I mean, I did have plans to make it much more enticing this year. And we were gonna run November, December, possibly still into that small, you know, winter break that the kids are still out.
So what do you all think for that?
Well, I think we're, we're working in the tactical, which can be solved, like, outside of this meeting, there's, you're not, you're still twenty-three thousand dollars off based on what you got on your budget, so it just comes fixing.
Right.
And everybody agrees, like, yeah, we don't, we don't give in to that, of course. But you've got to come up with those funds in some way if you're gonna fund it at that level. And if we do fund it at that level, I do think, based on the requirements, that, that some recording requirements, you know, I think an achievable goal is probably, I don't say a quarter. Twenty-five percent of your budget comes from, comes from fundraising sources.
We get asked people to bring candy, we get asked people, you know, like, I mean.
Right.
It comes, it becomes a less of a, hey, show up, have a good time, and more of a.
Get involved.
Get involved, bring bucket and then have a good time, you know, like, so, you know.
Hey, that's, that's.
Especially like for the Trump retreat, most of the people that get out candy do bring their own candy, but we always like to have a reserve. We spend about five hundred dollars in candy.
That's a lot of candy.
Oh, it goes, it goes through.
Yeah, so we spend about five hundred dollars in candy just so people don't run out.
You have that business.
So would you all like me to adjust this line item? And make it more? I've got, I've got some contingency in here, if that's the direction we wanna go. But I, I need your honest direction on how, how to move forward.
How, like, when we've discussed in previous years, the contingency somewhere around three hundred, is that right? Is that how much budget slack we've got built into this?
No.
You gotta work on that.
Oh, whoa, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. Oh, wait a minute.
You said contingency.
Uh-huh.
Are we, are we missing definitions? Cause we call budget slack, you know, once you build in just in case, you know, your safety cushion. Like, and, and Todd operated somewhere around three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in budget slack.
Okay, so I wanna tell you how I did it. I know that there are revenues, that we're gonna hit more. I know this. I did not budget that, so when we have these overages, I know we've got it, that we're okay. Now, when I say contingency, I mean, there's.
So.
There's seventeen thousand dollars unbudgeted contingency funding, fu- funding that's in here. So that's what I'm saying, like, if, if I need to bump it up some, I can bump it up some. And I just need to know from you all, what you want me to do. Again. Again, this is. We all want to offer the best of the best to our, to our citizens, to our taxpayers, to our town. That's our goal. We all want to offer the best. We have some funding and it's from our taxpayers. How do we spend their funds? What's the best? We, yes, we have discussed emergency services. Yes, that is one hundred percent very extremely important. It's a must. We've discussed roads. We have got to pay our roads. That's an actual expense we have to do. So when you have some funds that you can play a little bit with, what do you do?
One of the items we had to talk about was, and how he mentioned, he gave a very appropriate, uh, you know, PowerPoint presentation showing the, the, the areas that are lacking and are not, folks with disabilities can't access, right, they're in a wheelchair, the main street. What is our name plan for this year?
Chris Marshall and I talked about it today.
Okay.
Now, you've got, remember, Chris wasn't in his position at that time, but we did talk about it today. That was something he knew nothing about, but we are going to, we trying to address some of that.
So, like, in this upcoming calendar year, is there a timeline to it? Is there a budget allocation that is either over or under? So it's, you know, I think those are my, like, we can.
Well, and if I am remembering correctly, I can remember Courtney talking to us one time about a curving and guttering grant that I would have to get with her and to see what that is and see if that's a possibility.
That would be great. But we do have, I think in the current budget we're in right now, and please don't quote me, I think that we have ten thousand dollars in sidewalk maintenance, um, in this budget right here. There's ten thousand dollars in sidewalk maintenance for this budget as well. So.
How much sidewalks does that buy you?
I don't know the, the rates and things like that.
Because it's almost doubled in price, right, from three years ago?
So, I mean, do, do we need to allocate more funds to our sidewalks? Do, that, that's fine. We can, we can readjust, but at the present moment, we're still up here.
Right, but if you, you take your emergency fund to twenty-five percent, which we are, if you're overfunded in that, you could meet these obligations. You can give, basically, you buy more public goods.
And, and we can do that. I just need you to tell me that.
Well, we need to know what the actual number, we don't know what the number is. We can't tell you how much to allocate. So if we don't know the difference between twenty-eight percent and twenty-five percent and, and whether that's fifty thousand or fifty, then, then we, we're, we're starting, we haven't started. You're guessing, yeah. If you're not measuring, you're guessing. That came from an engineer. The town, I think, we got one budget. So how long are they, like, how long, like, we're in the transmissions, right? There's, so, I mean, that's.
What's, do you know what average costs, you know, twenty-three seasons?
About thirty, about sixty.
I think we're at sixty-two in the budget.
They, they did three a year. Like, man, or, or you're gonna come back.
And we are. The DA, the rural development grant, I mean, our cars are not gonna be able last two years.
I feel that the police department has signed at least three million.
We got like staff of twelve officers.
Well, they, they can, they can staff up to sixteen.
Sixteen.
And, and it's more than, than just, I mean, it's a recruitment tool too.
Oh, absolutely.
In today's age, I think the same, no.
People wanna look good.
Yeah, if you, if you offer, you know, the best of the best, usually didn't matter, but it, it definitely matters now.
And assume we're a town before they got, uh, not thirty-four, but put your stuff on the line, maybe.
Don't, it's funny. Well, while that's being pulled up, and we've discussed it for two years in a row, and you've added some requirements to the train station, folks, I'm thinking of the train station. But a concept would be, we've got three part-time employees there, is that correct?
We did have two.
Okay.
And, um, we took one of those positions and split, and now we have three. So there's a little bit more flexibility if someone needs to be off, there's still two people.
Right.
Kind of as a safety precaution.
I mean, kind of, I don't know, if I, if I was, if I'm thinking about that, I, rather than like sixty-eight thousand dollars in the budget annually, I think it should be somewhere around thirty if you have one employee and you're open from Friday to Sunday, or something like that, re- reduced hours or special hours for kids who wanna have book club or whatever it is. But you stop two events in there, which was offsetting some of those costs. They quit doing that because of the, the history behind it, right? Those two have items in there, but you've got a net, if you're looking to create some more budget slacks, well, that's in that negative in that department.
Okay.
Then you, you still have the same question around, is that part of our culture? Is that something that we, we wanna have? But if you're looking for a place to cut in order to reallocate funds, you can take it to one and put it to three days a week open or something like that to, to create budget slack.
What were you saying then?
You know, you can't spend sixty-eight thousand dollars for a employee on that train station. Can we look at that?
Sixty thousand is also part of visitors, you're not getting, I mean, how many visitors do we have each week?
Hey, I missed, it's, it's showing fifty-eight, not sixty-eight.
And that, that includes your operational supplies, like, um, your electricity, your building maintenance, that too. Um, as far as part-time salaries, it's thirty-nine thousand, part-time salaries. They've been submitting their visitation sheets in the council packet. And I don't remember, I, I know we did have a trivia event down there. Um, since we've got, you know, new people, new ideas, um, that use my computer, they will not, so use my, just use my computer. Um, they wanna start doing like a monthly event with having tea at the train station. You know, it's not something that everybody's gonna flock to, but it's gonna get people there. Um.
Is this tea spot?
It might need to be, but not at least.
You gotta bring your own stuff.
Doing some.
But the point was to try and hit people down there, try to hit people in those doors. And then they might see it, say, oh, here, you should check it out. So, I mean, again, this is where I need direction from you all.
I've been to the train station one time, seen it. Of course, I live here, I love tourists. I love that we have it.
But that's something, it's like true.
And I'd say really negative, that's why I've been.
But it's been, I mean, it's obvious, like.
I've been to it, seen it, it's great, but I don't, I don't need to go back. A lot of revolts were wrong, I believe, and a lot of losses.
We all lost to Susan's family.
I'm usually in a season, crazy, I don't live anymore.
I don't even go anymore because of Susan.
I started a Bible study, so I don't have to lose, travel, excuse. Sorry, I'll give you a chance.
You should have a Bible trivia.
I hung out in plays when I could, so.
You can be the, the moderator.
I'm really as much fun.
Uh, so Zach, okay. The whole budget for the train station is fifty-eight, four-ten, eighty. Um, thirty-nine thousand of that was part-time salaries. So, I mean, do we adjust hours? Okay, maybe we adjust hours, that's fine. But what we have been trying to do this past year is get those employees more involved, get more out of those employees than what we had. They're doing our quarterly newsletter now. That's something I used to do. So they now do quarterly newsletter. They were able to come up and help us with a huge project that we had. Once I got to the manager, I didn't have the availability at time, so they helped get our ladder copper project done. I mean, they're, they're useful employees. So do we look at adjusting hours? Okay. I mean, how, how much do we, how much are we talking?
Well, what we've been discussing is, and the guy's getting rate is twenty, twenty-three thousand dollars slack, right? Slack, it's not slack, it's a deficit. Is he waiting?
So Jessica, do you have those numbers?
So now we're pivoting back to the question Zach asked earlier.
Well, I mean, we can continue here. I'm sorry.
Let, let's, let's knock one out, so.
Okay. So at what, at what number do we feel comfortable allocating part-time salaries? I mean, is, is there, do we knock off a day? And that's three people. Do we knock off two days? That's.
So what are the operating hours now?
We just changed them.
We're closed on Mondays and Tuesdays and open the remaining days of the week, have more seasonal. So in the wintertime, it's eleven for, in the summertime, hours that start on April first, we're ten and four.
So what will that say to you? Being those Monday and Tuesday after thirty-nine thousand, if thirty-nine thousand is salary.
What was right?
So thirty-nine thousand is five days.
You really do. So cut two days?
So at seventy-eight hundred a day, um.
Times five?
Times five.
Yeah, with five days, um, if, if your cost is seventy-eight hundred dollars to operate one, one of those days.
Okay, so do, do we say work those Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? Save seventy-eight hundred dollars a year?
I think you could close Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, you would. I mean, those days, the first of week after the weekend, there's not much room.
And your traffic is heavier on the weekends, so I do see those weekends would be the number one.
Okay.
So open three days a week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Sundays.
Yeah, Sunday.
Sunday.
Sunday, we're even from one to four.
Yeah.
So do we like that?
Yeah.
I do.
Okay.
All right, so you can just, so you got seventeen in contention, so you can just bring up seventy-eight hundred bikes?
Yes.
There you go, you're at twenty-four eight hundred. Pretty close. But we still have, we have some police cruisers.
So maybe we take those emergency funds and purchase a cruise, sixty-two thousand dollars is what fifteen they told.
Here's my thing on the leasing. If you want to flip your fleet, the leasing is like that. You're looking at.
Now, do they outfit on everything?
Yes, you can. I know the sheriff's office outfits, they're, but you can't all outfit. And we have two different reps for whatever reason, so the police department has a different rep than the sheriff's office. Well, I thought that was awkward, but you're looking at about a thousand dollar vehicle per month, is about what the lease payments are. And I've got what, what they sent me today for purchasing three vehicles for one year, twenty-seven thousand, two eighty-six dollars. The next year, if you purchase three, they just keep climbing. But the key is to, to flip your, for four years, to flip your fleet. At the end of the fourth year, you're paying a hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred, six thousand dollars for that year. But you got, you know, your, your fleet is.
Are you restricted? Is it like a lease where you're restricted on my old?
No, no. Then you can start selling those vehicles and that money can come back in paying the lease payments.
So when you flip them, you don't turn them back in?
You can, you can, you can reset, you can reset one.
Back to whoever.
Interpreted.
And again, we, we've met with Enterprise, we don't have the same rep issue.
We don't, for whatever reason.
We, we don't.
I mean, it sounds like a good, a good deal to, uh. Sounds like a good deal to continue refreshing the fleet. Do our cars last four years? I'm just asking, I don't know.
They should.
They should.
I think that most of them will last like closer to six-ish.
But if you refresh them every four, you're getting newer cars.
And, yeah, this is something Chief that I talked about, but I didn't feel comfortable last week. Only having forty minutes to look at it, bringing it to you all, I did not feel comfortable with that.
But.
But it's absolutely something that we can look forward in, look to do it in the future.
It's a cost saving, I mean, I think it's cost saving to do this on the front end, for sure.
And it, it takes account, you know, your maintenance for your older vehicles, that'll reduce too. So it's, it's not a bad thought. It's just, I don't think.
It's those terms and conditions you have to look at very closely.
I, I don't think our proposal was, was finished.
So you, you don't think the numbers I have here are accurate? For three vehicles, twenty-seven thousand, two eighty-six, eighty-four?
I don't know because ours wasn't done by, by three vehicles. Ours was done more.
The payment on three is, the payment's a thousand dollars a month, three twenty-seven is not.
So, well, here, here's the, they've asked for a Drango, uh, fifteen hundred and a top.
One thousand dollars a month, three thirty-six thousand.
That is a ballpark.
Yeah.
Uh, like this one, they're eight fourteen twenty-one, six forty-five forty-nine, and one eighty-five sixty-eight. It's the monthly numbers.
We need to move on. I'd have to get a leave like that.
Okay.
Because then we can't pass it because we won't.
Okay, so we have saved seventy-eight hundred dollars in our train station line item.
Yeah, so between your contingency and that, you're twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars.
What?
You said we had seventeen thousand in contingency.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So you're at twenty-four eight.
Yes.
Basically, you've scratched the itch, if that's the main objective that we're trying to solve for, but we haven't solved for these vehicles. Or sidewalks, perhaps. Yeah, I don't think so.
But she needs to approve, yes.
I mean, it's not a vote, but I need you all to approve what we have discussed. So she can get it to the newspaper next Thursday.
But if I have to leave like eight thirty, it's gonna fall.
You won't be here eight thirty.
I'll deal with some stuff.
And, okay, so she has to get it to the paper next Thursday. We have reporting deadlines that we have to do. We have to publish it in a newspaper or general circulation before the public hearing twice.
So, uh.
Okay.
What, what's, what's motor on, once we start getting close to?
All right.
If we don't have to have a vote, it doesn't matter if we have a quorum?
No, I guess not. Other than you can't, uh, you can't adjourn. You won't have a quorum to adjourn, you'll have to, um, recess. And then at your next meeting, you'll have to adjourn from this meeting.
Ah, fun stuff.
Okay, so let's, let's roll. Um, so. Um, so. I'm, I'm gonna go American League Village, it's pretty simple. The whole budget is thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars. And that is for building maintenance, supplies, internet. So, any questions? Zoning, property maintenance.
What are you on charge for other than that?
What's that? Thirty five dollars each, each time they rent it, each Friday.
What do we charge someone on the general?
Seventy five dollars for the whole day.
But I know my daddy would give that.
Rentering just gets it for a portion of the day. But anybody else that rent it.
Gets it all day.
Gets it all day, seventy five dollars. A fifty dollar refund will cost.
They're in there cooking and stuff in our kitchen, you know?
Yes.
Civic organization, you know, they do volunteer stuff.
Okay, so, uh, property is owning, maintenance, um, maintenance. It actually went down to twenty one thousand dollars. And that is because we had the demolition of fourth wall and alley in there. So, um, it, it kinda saved us a little bit. But do you all have any questions for that? There's still twenty four thousand dollars left in the demolition of structures. So, we can still take care of that issue as well. No questions, I will move on. Our mowing department. So, we are in full swing of trying to find seasonal workers right now. We have got a, a good start. However, that start usually fizzles out. And then we have to, you know, keep trying to find replacement, trying to find replacement. We're still doing it in-house. So, I brought that part time salary up there to like a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And again, that's because sometimes we'll start out with full crew and we drop down, and we come back and it's just kind of a roller coaster all, all season. But overall, it just increased eight thousand dollars.
Do part time people get tested, like?
Yes.
Just asking.
Yes. Um, even our volunteer fire department gets tested. Mini park.
So, so the mini park would be one, I mean, Brad's proposed the idea of creating a shrine for Billy Weiger. Right, Hall of Fame, Dante?
Yes.
And, uh, you know, it's like, okay, again, back to the emergency fund, it's like, do you reduce that to fund this, to get that done?
I do know that he, he is talking about getting contributions from community. He's not necessarily saying, hey, tell Natasha, I want you to fund everything. Um, he actually has ideas to do the fundraising. Uh, now, will he need some help with things? I'm sure he is.
Could that should be in time help?
Some of it could, yes, absolutely.
I can tell you that Hill Studios that was here doing the SMART grant, they had come up with some ideas for the mini park. And I've gotten in touch with him, and he is going to do some of the, the concept drawings for what Brad wants to do.
So, that's free near drawings there. But I, I do know that Brad does have funding plans.
Is this something we attack later?
Do you remember at the high school, they did those bricks? Yeah, so it's something, you know, kind of like that. Um, he called me today and asked me would I be on a committee? And I was so sure I'll be on the committee. So, I don't know where we're going just yet. But again, yes, we do have those funds, and that could be something that we will fund, depending on what an act would be. So.
Okay.
Okay. Train station, we kind of already talked about train station. So, unless you all have something, other question, we'll move on to capital expenses. Um, general liability insurance will be going up. Air contingency, again, you know, I did increase that just a little bit. Then the next few line items, those are air volumes that we already have. I do think that in the budget we're currently in, uh, the garbage truck principle and the interest was not quite what it ended up being. Um, it took us over a year to get the garbage truck. So, rates had changed, and I tried to adjust this budget to reflect what's actual, if, if that makes sense. Um, historical society, I think last year, we had voted to give them a two thousand dollar line item in the budget. I did put that back in here this year, if you are still good with that.
That voting state parade there, you all had normally donated three thousand dollars before.
Mm-hmm, and that, I've had it at zero, and it says, takes what today coordinates the snow.
Because that's lumped in, the amount that you give.
So, there's that line item, or that.
Grants being gone is gonna hurt with that.
What?
Grants being gone is gonna hurt with that.
Yeah. I don't know how to replace that.
Maybe an outside grant will.
Um, there's one in Richlands, they're attached to county. Sorry, that's not important to my, sorry about that. Vehicle and heavy equipment maintenance. So, this is our, um, kinda like our auto shop, um, where we do our repairs. Nothing really much changed here. The overall department changed five thousand dollars. Street department. So, we've had some personnel changes, so that's changed some of that. So, we did discuss this a little bit in the previous budget work session, but paving, we went from a hundred and thirty five thousand, five hundred dollars up to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And route four sixty, water line replacement, two fifty is what's expected for that.
So, is V doc wanna do, they're studying good repair, uh, yearly paving one of our streets?
That opens up in May.
Oh, okay, so we're not there yet.
Right, so I, I can't answer that just yet, but we can, we can absolutely try for it, and we will try for it. I just don't have an answer for that just yet. But, um, something else that used to be kind of together, and we split it out last year, street maintenance. So, this is your potholes, your gravel, your drains. Street sweeping and striping used to be in that line item. And we thought it would be better if we could just see it a little better, so we split it out. Um, so, street sweeping and striping actually increased that line to twenty thousand dollars. Street striping went up significantly from what it was in the past. I don't know the, the reason for that, other than it cost us more. So, I don't know if, you know, the, the thermal paint went up, I, I don't know all the answers for that, other than we did pay significantly. Um, and we just did, Zach had asked, sorry. Zach had asked about when we were going to do the street sweeping, so we did that the end of March, first part of April. So, streets, at least for a little while, a little preview. So, I did, because, you know, we had had a winter like we had for quite a while. And we, at least five times bought salt. Um, so I did increase our salt line by ten thousand dollars. Now, maybe we don't have a winter like that next year, I hope we don't, that'd be fantastic. But in case we do, I did increase it. Um, and then there's your, your sidewalk maintenance that we were talking about. Yeah, there is ten thousand dollars there, I skipped one, so sorry. Bridge maintenance, um, every year, we have to have air bridges inspected. And the Clenchdale Community Action Bridge, that's what I'm talking about, on Bridge Side Drive. Um, the rocker on, is that what I put? Rocker replaced, there in rocker replacement. Um, that was something recommended for that bridge, so we will need to address that. And get that taken care of. So, we have just one more little section.
Before we go to that, are, have you been thinking or kind of watching on? Everybody does want these tariffs, once they get the regon effect. So, uh, looks like any goods you purchase across the board, they're keep in the back of your mind that those items can go up, depending on where they're purchased. You know, and, cause, I mean, it's just a reality. Is, and you don't know if it's gonna be, if it comes from China, is it gonna be a hundred thirty five percent? Or is it, yeah, from Canada, wherever, is it gonna stick at the other?
And that is absolutely something that we'll have to, we'll have to do.
Emergency fund is, yeah, we don't know what's gonna happen, it's on again, off again, you know, like a damn yoga, so we've, we've done that. And we have to be prepared, cause we do need to buy goods.
Um, so the, the only other two line items were, um, our miscellaneous retiree health insurance and the personal property stops that DMV charges us when we release it. And that went up a whole night, nine hundred twelve dollars. So, that's your general fund. I do have a couple, like two, I have two more things, if we could squeeze it in really quick. Lincolnshire Park fields. So, the back field, um, we had had a really hard rain, and Susan and I went out there and just kind of looked over it, and those fields, the back ones, are not usable when there's weather like that.
And I think that falls into the comprehensive plan that, you know, we discussed.
Right.
We have to do something there, I mean, there's, it's not sooner or later, it's gonna become unusable. And it is after a rain anyway.
I, I was gonna mention those funds to. I have two quotes. And this is to fix the back field and fix it for some drainage, fix it with, um, the infield mix on top of it that helps it drain. I have a quote for two inch depth and three inch depth. The quote, this is just for the infield mix. If you have two inch depth, it's nine thousand, nine seventy five. Basically, this is more or less a bad agent.
Yeah, they put their own.
Okay, this quote is for three inch depth, thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars.
So, bigger bang.
Well, hold on, I've, I've got a, an answer. This is the recommended, the three inch, thirteen thirty. Um, Michael Dodson, that we bought our paper firm. We talked to him about doing the grading work and putting in some actual drainage. And he would charge us twenty five hundred dollars to do that.
Same offer, and there's thousands.
That's the grading work. Okay, so you're at, let's say sixteen thousand dollars. You still have to buy, you know, the, the pipe, you still have to buy the rock to put in it. But an estimated thirty thousand dollars. Doing it this way could get that field to where we could have tournaments on it. And Dave that works for us is very big in the softball. And he said that, you know, if we could get it where it was usable, that his group would do two tournaments a month there, and they could use that field. So, is it a huge revenue boost? No.
Yeah, not for us, but the economy.
It's getting used. It's getting fixed, it's getting used, it's bringing people here, maybe those people will bring their kids, and they wanna go to the.
Well, they do, some people travel.
So, is that something that we would be interested in doing?
But you're only looking at the back field, right?
That is correct, this is just for the back field. Because that field is in a more dire need at the moment. Now, keep in mind, we've.
Oh, go ahead.
We've got this grant in to the Cumberland Recreation. No, it's Cumberland Forestry, sorry, got grants mixed up. But we do have a grant in from that, but we don't know, we don't even know if we ever wanna hear from them, if they said, you know, spring, summer. So.
You know, and then, you know, for, you know, our rec soccer program's pretty, pretty big. You know, we call it the Lincolnshire League, when I was playing soccer out there, cause the ball will land, and you have no clue where it's gonna go, right? But it's still not, it, I think it's a good, it's a good solution, but it's still not comprehensive. It's not, we, we have a real estate developer who's interested in purchasing a separate property to outfit this one. You know, and we, those conversations have stalled.
I was just gonna say, has anybody heard from these people, because I haven't.
Yeah, I mean, he came here and spoke to us.
Six months ago.
Yeah, well, we didn't say, yeah, let's, let's press, like, there was no, I think the lack of follow-ups on our side. Maybe it's a combination of both, you know, you re-initiate that, get these fields fixed. But if you're, if you're on the back two fields and it's thirty thousand dollars, so you're looking at maybe sixty, sixty to seventy for both fields?
I just got quotes for the back field.
So, I, I think what Mr. Shutt had left with is wanting, giving me the cost of fixing up Lincolnshire, making it playable, making it pristine. You know, fields and playable, and he'll work on that. He has no numbers, so he wants numbers to, and I think that's what we left at off there.
Okay.
So, if we knew, what did you ask for in the recreation grant? Was that to cover everything?
The quote that our former public works director gave him, it was three hundred and sixty six thousand dollars for both fields, for drainage, for redoing everything.
So, I have none. Right, I mean.
That's not a number.
No, I mean, no, I mean, I have a number of what that, but when we're talking press boxes and things of that nature, it's gonna raise enough.
Spend a lot more than they are.
Yes, I'm, I'm just saying, I was strictly thinking for field maintenance parks, but there's a lot more that needs to go into it. Ventsing and stuff like that.
Okay, so, we, I'm, I'm kind of hearing, we don't wanna do this right now. So, we're gonna leave the field.
If you do it, I wanna do, do both. Because the, you know, soccer, I mean, yeah, I'm biased towards soccer, I think the adult softball's fantastic, and, you know, here we are a year later since they came and asked us to do the outfits, and then we had sticker shock, I always thought it was like five, like five hundred to do the, the whole thing. Not that it was the price, it was, it was, it was outside of our budget. And this is more reasonable, we can do it with, with funds that we do have. Afford, if we can do both, I think that that's a, another measurable success for a load.
So, if, what did I, 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 so if we spend, if one was twenty seven, is that what you spent?
They, they told me that you get it down to thirty.
For thirty, so if you do two, you're at sixty, what if in the next six or eight months, we go the other way, then we just?
Well, you're probably not, like, if you're looking at a real estate plot to flip.
Probably take longer.
It's gonna take longer, and then also, your, your price comparison's probably not coming in the same rate. So, if you're looking at press boxes and, and scoreboards, maybe you got the field solved, maybe that scratches in the second inch.
Okay, alright, tracking, okay, ten million dollars.
And I was gonna ask if the funding, if we decided to do this, could we look at some of that revenue recovery funds?
Alright, here, here we are, this is crazy. This is crazy. But if, one, one angle that I would like to look at on this is to strip the paint, like, make the rain light, your soccer builds. And strip the paint, put grass down, you know, you got plenty of dirt over at the industrial park, where we can't bring in industry.
It's not our dirt.
Yeah, it's not our dirt.
Would they donate the dirt?
The guy had told Todd at one time that he would donate the dirt, as long as we did the hauling. So, as long as, and now we have a bigger dump truck, so we did actually, I mean, okay, so there's an angle there, but you, you look at your parks comprehensively and then, outfit Lincolnshire with builds, and then also create new fields, grass fields. It should help with perhaps the, the drainage, I, I mean, and you gain another asset to your town for multi-use sports field where, where kids can do football, soccer, baseball, whatever. And you retain the, the second, like, maybe the lap cap for parking. And you retain the, the second, like, maybe lap cap for parking, but you look at that. But, if we were to use revenue recovery funds for this, I mean, I'm, I'm good with a partial solution that gets the Lincolnshire builds, like, both of them fixed, but outside of that, it would, I think, that's a, a good use of federal dollars to improve their locality, to, and, and, and give our youth more opportunity to have more fields to practice on. When I get back, I'll look for the drawings that I had that showed the two soccer fields under Rainy Lot. I mean, they show the turf, but, I mean. The turf you gotta replace, and, and grass, you know, you have the drainage, but, we've discussed it, that's in the, the stack of plans that we, we had, it was somewhere down here. But, using the recovery funds to, to knock those out would be another achievement that we could get done in the near term. And it would be a much, much less of an eyesore than it currently is. And if we don't do anything with it, we should get the, the old wood off of it, that, those are gonna.
I asked about it yesterday, when we come back in town, and they told me they were turning.
There are one big bonfire. Not right there, okay. Could have a big, there's a fire, isn't it? Yeah, just have a bonfire in the movie night. Okay, have a cake.
Yeah, that, that should go over well here.
Yeah.
Could do a little camping shows, it'd go over very well.
That would be cool. It's like Burning Man.
Still forty, okay. Yeah.
So, would, in, in interest of the time for tonight, would you all be okay if I get another quote for the other fields? Bring it back to the main meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't change this budget right now.
Right.
And I have one more thing, and I will be done, and you all can talk about whatever you need. The fire department digital sign, everybody seemed like they were in support of.
You just needed direction.
I nev- right, I never got the real direction to say, go get some prices.
But we've been talking about it, and, well, I mean, I parked on it for long enough, I, I think.
Grant did you get for that one?
Thompson chair, and then I think.
These two know, this.
'Cause we have so much rescue recovery.
Can we try again? Right now Thompson chair and all is tied up before hot work. Okay.
I, I think to get this going, and we're getting ready to go into tourist season, and we'd love to have something up there directing visitors. We've got OTR, we put the restaurants flowing through there, so they know that. I think personally, but I, I think, in my opinion, is moving forward with it, we, we've not promised them it would happen, but we've said we would do what we can.
Can I at least get pricing in, yes, can I do that?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So.
Whatever, if you want.
We're just gonna talk about some kind of statue monument for Cecil Johnson.
It's, it's the sign, it's gonna be kinda in, in his memory.
He's gonna be in the sign.
That is what the fire department, to my understanding, has wanted.
Yeah, they wanted a digital sign of the, the wall that's built around it, kinda, uh, um, mentioned Cecily in some sort of way.
Yes, memorialized.
Memorialized, well, the word's.
But that was my understanding, so if I'm wrong.
Same, uh, same here.
Okay.
Can you get us an update on the movie deal?
Oh, yeah, it didn't, it was like, not over that ribbon tag, did it?
I know that, we've talked to Sharon today, and about signing all the documents and everything to still get it done, and she's on board, but I haven't seen any boots on the ground.
Oh, she's working on it, pardon.
Well, by taking that loan, there's a project completion deadline.
Eighteen months.
Like, whenever she signs, you can guess.
Yeah, it's February. So it's already started, you're taking ass.
It's four, eleven twenty-seven.
It should probably be out. It's been twenty-two months now, the year.
It'll be by the.
Tell my people.
Could you tell my people to, to clear it, Charlie?
Okay.
With, you know, you're going back to the comprehensive strategy, you know, and looking at a revenue recovery funds. And I've brought it up several times, but I think, you know, I think we do have good progress. But, I, I think it would be smarter to look at those funds, identify the projects that we have hit, and then, like, budget for each of those, at least set it aside, just like we did for the mountain bike. If you set it aside, if you don't get to it just yet, you've got it set aside, at least you've got a, a clear vision for what you're, you're paying them with, with dollars attached to it.
How much is in that fund, Jess?
General fund reserve or the other?
Uh, sports complex.
That one is, we'll round up and say two point one.
Then there's no reason you shouldn't fix that rain in lot part of you.
We. Yeah, you hit it quick. Yep. Like, I'm, I'm.
I mean, by the end of the year.
Yeah, well, we're, we're with it, yeah.
Yes, that'd be great, that'd be really good.
Absolutely.
Be happy.
And that gets you, you know, another tool in town. And, yeah, when I, when I pushed the original version of the plan to Will, he, he said that he would work to get some of the funding I put on Virginia's budget, on the state budget to help this funding, so. Well, I'll, I'll talk to him again, too. We know with the mountain biking piece, they wanna target that in August. So you might be into August, to, to get a budget line item. So I mean, that's a positive vision. Um, and quick achievable goals, and that'll bring a lot of support in town. So do, do about the other? When, when you shot her in, rain in lot? And this is where that two point one million dollars from the, you know, the art company, it's like, how are you gonna divide that up between pursuing natural gas in, in town, cabinet at Lincolnshire? We've already carved out a little bit for the mountain biking piece. That's, I think we should divide it up, maybe not tonight.
No, not tonight.
Okay.
I mean, I brought cookies.
So, I like where this is going. Shows me that you all do have a vision for the future, so I like the conversation.
My vision starts at. Check out the groups.
So, I presented the whole budget. We need to have, we need to have something to the paper on Thursday of next week. Do we like what's presented, do we need to change something, and if so, what and how do you wanna change?
And so out of that, we carved twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars to, to spend elsewhere, from the train station and then using the. So that's the only item on it that we have, unless we look at the emergency fund and carve out extra money for subducks, or, right? But the near target, we've got this twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars that we can put elsewhere. And then if we're gonna go beyond that, then you're gonna dip into your.
So are we giving that to town today?
Well, that, that would be the question, I mean, we kind of worked, worked our way towards that, okay?
And that's, that's say we are, we done with it.
Well, I think you put requirements out there, you know, if you're doing, if you're doing seventy-five thousand dollars, I, I do think the town, like, one, you know, there's so many questions around the memorandum of understanding, and like, there's a signed copy, there's, there's a signed copy with the advancing Main Street, but actually they.
There is a signed copy with the town.
There is no.
Yes, there is.
No, you can't.
There is Todd signed one.
I have that signed one.
I have signed one.
You have that.
That's, that's exactly where I was going, uh, with that, because there was, there's a discrepancy there where Robin didn't have that signed agreement that Todd signed back in the day in, in the town's folders. And, and that needs to get solved, because we actually have to have, we, we need to clear out this, this relationship.
Well, the MOU was presented since I was interim. It's completely different from what the MOU in the past was, because they were asking, what events do you want? How much money do you want for these events? They asked us for that, and we didn't give it to them.
Right, it was a hundred thousand dollars a year, right, that was the request?
No, this wasn't seventy-five, this was last year.
Okay.
And we did not sign an MOU, but they did ask us, what events do you want? And how much do you want us, out of your donation, to go toward those events, they did ask for that.
Okay, well, my history's foggy. Why, why, why don't we have it? If we elect not to sign it?
Yes.
Was that based on legal guidance, because legal guidance is lawful, and we haven't got a clear.
Yes.
Okay, so there's.
And the pyramid issue was brought up, and that's kinda where we stopped.
Okay, well, if you, you're hard, seventy-five thousand dollars for it, I think that in that MOU, we set a, a goal for task with a day, for how much funds we expect them to contribute through fundraising. And I think it's somewhere like, that's, we probably need to talk about that. You know, if you're seventy-five thousand dollars, and we say, hey, we want twenty percent of your budget to be, you know, achieved through, uh, fundraising, that's fifteen thousand dollars, you, you did ten last year.
That was net with ten, we actually raised like twenty-three.
Well, that's not what you said last meeting, you said you had twenty-three, but it cost you, it cost you thirteen to do it.
But you were asking for net, so our budget, we raised twenty-three.
Yeah, so, so net, you raised ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
But you, which one is it, are we asking for gross or net?
No, and, and you would look at net, because it's your cost of, of goods, basically. So, you know, fifteen's achievable, but I think that if you have those increments built into that memorandum of understanding, you have a more resilient organization that can withstand town budget cuts, like when we've gotta buy a, what a name it, garden.
You don't know this one.
Right, that's correct, and we, of course, we, we want the events, but I think that that would put, um, and I know where I'm talking, but, um.
It would, it would make it more accountable for everybody.
That's correct.
And I, I think that, you know, and I, I would be working with Nate as.
Absolutely, not on here, we're on the.
Oh, okay. But as, as the president of contract negotiations, you know, Nate and I could sit down and kind of form something, run it through you all, and let you look at it. If that's the way that we wanna move forward, I absolutely think we can make that happen.
I think, I don't think anybody in this room is that far off in our goals. We all want a better, stronger task. And I, I can see no reason, now this might be the pastor coming out, I see no reason why we can't talk it through and work it out and bottom line it and sign it and move forward. And, I'm gonna say something from my perspective. I don't wanna speak for Emily, but it's very similar for Emily. This has been a very big learning curve for me. You know, this has been a learning year, and I don't wanna speak for her.
No, it's definitely been a learning year.
I think things maybe could get more ironed out, and.
Absolutely.
And be able to move forward better, more cohesively, and I, I just needed to notice some direction.
I guess as a council, we just seem to know what, you know, what our money's buying.
And that's where the hill I view, I guess.
So, do I bump it to seventy-five? Do I bump it?
I'll weigh two hundred, shot, it'd be seventy-four eight.
How about seventy?
Sixty-nine.
What's that, it's seven, it's seven, I still have the other thing, how about seven? I don't, I don't have any bar yet, y'all, just throw it out.
I, I could fix it seventy, that's what you ought to recommend to do. And then that still leaves a little bit of contingency.
Forty-eight hundred.
Yeah, you got forty-eight hundred in contingency, knowing that you've got budget slack in there also.
Yes.
That's fine, and then you guys are gonna reattack the police cruiser?
Yes.
Okay. I would love to show, the only other thing I would love to show is a nod in the right direction for our, our folks with disabilities on Main Street.
Absolutely.
And, and if we could increase the, the, and pair with the grant, uh, to get those improved, but show, show something. Show, show action, because that's, like, just like the ball fields, you know, showing our, our citizens that we're listening to them and taking their concern seriously, may not be the hundred percent solution, we got too much, too many ninety-three, but, um, but getting that, maybe take two thousand, take that back up. That was your twenty-eight hundred contingent.
You guys are almost restoring my faith in local government. Pretty good.
Yeah, we, we need the back tracks though.
Yeah, sure.
Pretty good. Yeah, uh, we're good. Am I hearing good?
I'm good, you are good.
All right, we're good. We're going to journey.
That's your good journey.
That's your good journey.
Second, come on, come on.
Second.
Don't thank her, turn it, turn it up, turn it up.
All right.
All toast.
Thank you.